Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. We will reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council. You can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of all its states, our nation, under God, with the love, the peace, and justice of our own.
Kathy, would you please call the roll, please?
Mayor Tully.
Here.
Councillor Selly.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Scamperly.
Here.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councillor Tebow.
Here.
Councillor Trim.
Here.
Corn present.
We have three presentations tonight. We'll begin with the presentation of the Elizabeth Baxter Award, which I have issued the following proclamation. Whereas the city of Augsburg is proud to recognize and honor individuals who have made significant contributions to the preservation and promotion of local history. And whereas Ted Como, a native of Augsburg, has dedicated his life to collecting and sharing historical images and information about the city. And whereas Mr. Como inherited his passion for history from his late father, Earl Como, began collecting historical images, many taken from the turn of the 19th century. And whereas as a recorded photographer of the Augsburg Journal for 10 years, Mr. Como saw the interests attracted by Chuck Kelly's glance at the past, and in 2002 built a website to display his collection while also asking for copies of others. And whereas through Mr. Como's efforts, his website, www.augsburg.info, has grown, displaying hundreds of freely available historic images along with a link to city directories, phone books, and historical publications. And whereas Mr. Como's dedication to preserving and sharing local history has been recognized and appreciated by the community. And whereas Mr. Como's contributions extend beyond his work in preserving local history, as he has also served his country in the U.S. Air Force, including in Vietnam, and has had a successful career in journalism, winning numerous awards for his work. And whereas Mr. Como is also an active member of the Augsburg community, serving in organizations such as the Colonists and Lions Clubs, American Legion, and VFW. And whereas Mr. Como's dedication to his community and his passion for preserving local history make him a deserving recipient of the Elizabeth Baxter Award. And whereas the Elizabeth Baxter Award is given to individuals who promote local history in Augsburg in honor of former city historian Elizabeth Baxter. Now therefore, I, Michael Tully, mayor of the city of Augsburg, do hereby proclaim October 28, 2025, as Ted Como Day in the city of Augsburg, present him with the Elizabeth Baxter Award in recognition of his outstanding contributions to the preservation and promotion of local history. In witness whereof, I hear, I have hereon to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. It was a pleasure for Mr. Como to get this award. I had the opportunity to work with him many years ago, and a couple of years when I was sort of an apprentice working at the Augsburg Journal, and his contributions as noted in the proclamation to the city have been significant. So congratulations, Mr. Como.
Thank you very much. I, uh... I began that 55-year journalism career at the journal in 1969, and I moved down 10 years later to greener pastures. But during those years, I got to know and highly respect city historians Liz Baxter, Fred Irwin, and Percy Boyson. And to be in any way associated with those folks is a great honor indeed. So thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the Historic Commission, for this recognition and your dedication in preserving and promoting Augsburg's unique and important history. And thank you to my sister Barbara for accepting this on my behalf. I wish I could be there. But it means a great deal to me, and I can't begin to tell you how much I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's get Kyle Ward come back here.
Yeah.
For council up front. Yes. Yeah.
She's up by the mirror.
Yeah. Yes, please.
Would you like to congratulate Ted personally? He will be in on his own in room three, and there's a reception in there where somebody streaked by and congratulated Ted. He deserves it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have a presentation from Gyno Architecture and Engineering regarding the city pool rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, council. Thanks for the opportunity to come up here and present this project. So what we're showing is our conceptual design for the pool in a splash pad area. We've arranged two splash pads on the north side of the pool, close to the river. We've kind of arranged them in a way that, and you'll see it later in the slideshow, where a pretty prominent feature in the middle of the splash pad would be kind of central in your view shed there. We put some trees around behind that in an effort to create some shade in that area, just to give a cool place for parents and for children to take a break if needed. The pool itself, the revision there, we've eliminated the kiddie pool area and put in a beach entry, or we're showing a beach entry. We've discussed, we had a public meeting earlier today, we've discussed some options about the diving board and the deep end of the pool. Two of the folks that were at that meeting thought the diving board and the slide were very well-liked, and they really liked that feature. Jennifer was at the meeting. We've also planned some work to the current bathhouse, renovating that. And one of the features, yeah, that plan, sorry, is just a little bit more detail about the utility connections for the, for the splash pads.
Okay.
Mackenzie's going to talk a little bit about the bath renovations of the bathhouse.
Good evening. So the majority of the bathhouse, we're planning to update finishes. Currently, it's pretty dated and not the nicest area to have to go in and get changed or take a shower and go to the bathroom. So the primary part of the bathhouse renovation would be updating the finishes. We did also add three changing rooms, privacy changing rooms, in both the men's and the women's. And it was told to us at the public information session that really there needs to be more than three, because no one really likes to change in that open area. So I think we need to kind of look at that, maybe the possibility of adding an additional private changing room amongst the three we have in both the men's and the women's. And we also plan to paint all of the walls, paint the floor, paint the ceiling, so it really brightens it up and makes it a nicer environment for people to use.
Some of the other feedback we received was exterior showerheads, which may allow us to, basically just for rinsing the chlorine from your person, Andrew, bathing suit, which could allow us to reduce the number of showers inside, which might give us more space for those additional private changing rooms. And the request for a unisex toilet room, or family toilet room for changing in and to use restroom. These are more graphics of the splash pad and the arrangement they have. If you go one more. That one in the middle there is a taller feature I was talking about, Marines that are kind of central to the, to the plan. And, and there's just, there's a lot more technical stuff here for the splash pad, or just how the features are arranged on there. Is there any questions about the splash pad or the, or the pool?
I guess I would have one with the beach entrance, because there was some discussion about that. That allows for more independent ADA compliance.
Yes, that would.
And more elder usage of someone who needed assisted walking with a walker or cane or something could use that area.
Right, it really would. And so the beach entry is a more modern way to get accessibility for the pools. And really, a lot of the pools are going to it. It allows you to eliminate the need for your lift, the ADA, which is a requirement of, to have accessibility for the pool. The beach access, it makes it easier to get in and out of the pool for someone, specifically for someone on a wheelchair, but to your point, even an elderly person. There's, it's just that zero, zero depth at the, at the entry point. So you don't have to worry about stepping, you know, down a set of stairs or getting in into a lift that would dip you into the pool. And with this, we would, our project, I mean, it would include new waterproof wheelchairs that are also an ADA, you know, accessibility requirement. We didn't talk about that, but a lot of the equipment would be replaced with this project, all of the equipment would be replaced with this project, including the safety equipment and, and the, the cleaning equipment, maintenance equipment, all of that is planned on being replaced. And all the mechanicals, yep, mechanical equipment.
So the only entrance to the pool is either through the house or long, long entrance way connecting the area near, near the house to the splash pads, which would be.
Yes, so for the, for the pool itself, because you require, because the health department requires lifeguard and everything, you do need to control access to that. So yes, we were currently showing people that are going into the pool would come in building the same way they are today.
Okay.
Through the, through the lifeguard station.
Right. My only concern was, a lot of the mothers or families out there, they might have a toddler or somebody a little bit bigger that they're using the splash pad, and at the same time they might have, you know, a six or seven-year-old or a little bit bigger than that in the regular pool area.
Yeah.
And so I'm thinking about the mom that wants to watch both groups of kids. And so there's nothing in between, I noticed.
There, there's.
There's splash pads in the pool.
There's fence in between.
Right. Which mom's going to be upset about, so.
It's a good point. And it really ends up being a safety, a safety issue that they, they, I mean, your life, do, do kids under, under 12, can they go to the pool? I know in Watertown, they, they have to have.
I'm not sure. Not sure with the rules.
I think usually they have to be supervised, at least the Watertown pool I know is that. So that, I don't disagree with you. I think they would be.
That's my point, really, because a 10-year-old probably doesn't want to hang out at the splash pad or an 11-year-old.
Yeah. They're going to. And I guess, no, probably, they do. The way these splash pads are designed, it'd be the, that page right there, the one on the bottom, you can see the blue and yellow and red kind of circles or ovals. Those are different age groups. I can't, I can't read it, but I know that I've seen them in front of, if I could just look at yours. So the yellow, yellow, I'm sorry, that's a gentle activity zone, learning to enjoy infant toddler. The blue is universal zone, all ages. Dynamic zone is seven-plus years old. And, and, you know, from our experience at the, at the Splash Park at City Watertown, it's, yeah, it's, you know, young teenagers are, are still using the splash pads.
Really?
But a few of them, yeah, yeah. I don't think it's as, as popular as, you know, toddler and, you know, and.
Right.
Four, five-year-old, of course, but, yeah.
Any issues in Watertown between the splash pad and the pool?
They love it. The, we, we were given a quote from, from the Parks and Rec Director that, basically, if they could, if I, I don't have it with me, but if they could do more and larger, they, they would. Yeah. They, they love the splash pad. They really see it as a way to get those kids, you know, out there and doing something at, at times of year where the pool isn't open, you know, in the May-June, you know, before, before the college kid. They have the same situation you do where the lifeguards are priming for the college kids, you know, so May-June, before those kids are home, they're, the splash pad is available to them. And then also, you know, September, those warmer weekends in September, they're still using it.
I suspect they have a lifeguard at the splash pads as well.
They don't. It's not required.
Okay. I don't, anybody else in council think there should be an entrance or something?
I do agree with you.
Between the splash pads and the pool for those moms?
Mm-hmm.
With the kids in between?
Yeah. The, the concern would just be, you know, make, making sure you can control access to, to that and not, not get. Well, yeah.
Well, when the pool's open, it's open.
When the pool's closed, first. So there is, where the sidewalk becomes adjacent to the fence, first page there, you can see it. That little corner right by the, by the corner of the building there, that, there would be a double fence there, but it would only be, it would be locked when the pool's not open, of course. So, so the lifeguard could still see those kids, parents coming in or out at that corner. But, but it ends up being a controlled access, you know, concern, I guess, or risk for the council, but.
Yeah, I understand. It's difficult to find the balance.
Yep.
Between one, trying to propose here, and security, I guess. So, just my thoughts. I think there should be some sort of entrance there, but.
Okay. Are you staying closer to the other end?
Possibly a little area where the moms who have a child here and a child over here can hang out and watch them both.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mean to be.
No, it's a good comment. I, you know, I just, the other concern would be, that's also the deep end of the pool, so you need to be a little careful of that.
That's true.
With runaway toddlers.
Right. I don't know, maybe just a door in, in the fence or something might solve my, my, my issue. But that's something we can work on and talk about, probably. So, that's all I, the only comment that I had at the moment.
One of the other concerns I heard was that right now with the kiddie pool, a lot of the parents like to sit around the edge of the kiddie pool so they can really monitor their children. But I went over, Shane was kind enough to bring me over to the pool to look at the kiddie pool and refresh my memory with that. And during the conversation, where the beach entrance is, that's kind of a gradual wall, so parents or people accompanying young children could sit there and watch them, so it's not going to take away that, that opportunity. It's just going to be a little different. Is that correct?
I agree, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking at this slide, what is the orange highlighted area in the Centennial parking lot on the far right?
I think it's just the building.
I think it's the, the tower over there. Isn't that the building? It's the building itself.
It's a building?
Yes, that's the, that's the tower.
Probably not supposed to be orange.
It's not related to the project now.
That's not in the project.
No.
That's what was concerning me, is I didn't recall anything outside that particular property. So thank you.
Speaking to Dan's concern, is it possible to have the splash pads inside the fence so that the only way to get to the splash pads is also through the building?
You, you could, except then it would have to be, the reason we put, I guess, I should say, yes, we can. The reason we put it outside is so you could use the splash pad when the pool's closed.
Gotcha.
Because the pool has to be supervised with a lifeguard.
The splash pad.
The splash pad does not. Yeah.
We are keeping the deep end, right? I'm sorry, the deep end is staying with the diving board and the?
We can. We, we asked for some public input on that, and we've got some loud and clear at the meeting earlier.
I'm sure.
So yes, to answer your question, yeah, yes.
And also, as mentioned at the public meeting at the Biscuit earlier tonight, that the, the season for the splash pads would be longer than the season for the pool. Another reason to have them outside of the pool fence. Mentioned sort of treating the splash pad areas as like a playground area, you know, supervised, apparent responsibility, guardian responsibility.
And they would come with correct signage and, you know, just like, just like a playground.
In Watertown, do they get vandalized?
Yeah.
Okay. We do have vandalism.
The Parks Director didn't mention it, but I would, I would assume, you know, some, of course, but.
Right. So we plan on putting cameras in that area, correct?
Correct. Well, Shane, Shane had mentioned that today.
Yep.
Absolutely, we do. Yep.
So one of the other questions that came up is the usage of water for the splash pad. Could you talk about, because Shane enlightened me with how the splash pads are, you know, automated to be on for a certain period of time and then go off. They don't run the complete time that the splash pad area would be open.
So, yeah, so what we, what, what the, these splash pads come equipped with a sensor. The, the child will grow up and hit that sensor, and that essentially turns it on. You, you can control how long it runs, you know, 60, usually it's 60 seconds it'll run, and then someone else would come by and, and hit it again. And the kids actually, you know, kind of wait in line to be the one that gets to turn it on. So what we use, and the question came up about the amount of water we were using, because these, we've designed these to be drained to waste, and, and, and that's the way the city of Watertown's are as well. And in our area, water, although it's a, it's a resource, is, is not as expensive as it is in, say, Arizona or Los Angeles or something like that. And the treatment equipment and the filtration equipment that would be required to, to filter this water would be the same as the pool, but also separated. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be the same unit. It would be, but the same type of filtration system, so it would be redundant, I guess. But you would do that so you could, if, if one was contaminated, you needed to shut it down for some reason, you can still have the other amenity. But the question came up about the quantity of water, so what we've assumed for the seeker here is eight hours a day from May until October. And that is, that, that, you know, that's a pretty conservative number that we used because we didn't want to underestimate that in your environmental review. We also used three splash pads, which council knows there was a third planned, but, you know, it's kind of for future phases. But because we didn't want to have to come back and do another seeker at that point, we wanted you to go through the environmental review for all three of those amenities. So that's why we did that.
And what's the number? Ballpark?
I believe it was 8,000, 8,600 gallons. Yeah.
Okay. Is this water chlorinated or simply the?
It's.
treated water?
It's treated water. It's coming right off of your.
More additional chlorination. More additional chlorination?
That's correct.
So some splash pads, I know the city of Kingston, they run their splash pad right through their pool filtration, so it's a whole looped system. But because we're adding this later and because you want to keep the two independent, you feel this is the better course?
Right, yes.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Excited to see you.
Do we have a timeline when we're going to start? Obviously, in the spring. Is there any way we could start the bathhouse in the winter? Get that started?
We, we talked about doing that. We talked about how to get things reviewed and approved by the Health Department so we could start, so we could get those things out to bed and get them started. The, the, we've started that review process, and we're going as quickly as we can. If we can separate that with the Health Department, with the regulatory body, then we'll be able to, there's potential that we could start some of that work.
Very good.
We, we've also spoken with Shane about being able to self-perform some of this work, some of the, you know, some, some of the demo or something. And, and so we've kind of, we're working that issue from a couple of different directions about being able to start.
Nice.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation update this evening.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Now we have a presentation from the Development Authority of the North Country regarding the Water Management Plan Track update.
Good evening. My name is Brian Nutting. I'm the Director of Water Quality for the Development Authority of the North Country. Joining me also is our Chief Operating Officer, Kerry Tuttle, our Director of Engineering, Thomas Haynes, and our Supervisor for the city's water and wastewater facilities, Dave Rowe. Christian Foul, our Assistant Director of Water Quality, was going to join us, but he had an unexpected emergency to take care of, so it'll be the four of us. So we've been asked to talk a little bit about the services we provide for you. I'm going to provide an overview of the authority and a quick overview of our Water Quality Division, and Thomas is going to provide an overview of our engineering services and our Engineering Division. And then Dave is going to speak a little more specifically about the city's facilities, which we oversee. So, if we go to the next slide, please? So the Development Authority was a, is a public benefit corporation, was created by the New York State Legislature in 1985. Our purpose is to serve common interests in Jefferson, Lewis, and St. Lawrence counties. We, we provide assistance, we want to develop infrastructure, anything that would improve the economy and the general well-being of the communities in those three counties. We are owners and operators of regional water and wastewater systems in Jefferson County. We own a fiber optic network that goes all throughout New York State, and then we own a landfill in Rodman in Jefferson County, which accepts trash from all three counties. Next slide, please. Some of the municipal services we provide, we provide a wide range of services to all the communities throughout the North Country. We provide contract operations, technical administrative services, and then specifically water and sewer technical assistance, one of those being water and wastewater system management, which is what we provide to the city of Augsburg. We also do water and sewer rate studies, staffing analysis, analyses, excuse me, procedure and policy development. We do have the ability of grant writing and grant administration, capital project management, asset management, community planning, housing, brownfield redevelopment, geographic information systems, better known as GIS. We'll speak a little more detail on that, training on that, and web-based hosting of that. We also provide supervisory control and data acquisition, also referred to as SCADA, controls engineering and integration, and we'll speak in a little more detail on that later on in the presentation. Then we also provide consolidation studies and implementation for communities that are looking to combine their resources. Next slide, please. Real quick, I just wanted to show you the different areas where we provide water quality services in the North Country. If you see the areas in blue, that's where we provide full operations and maintenance services, where we provide the labor, and we do everything for the community that they ask us to. In the lime green color, that's where we provide our wholesale water and wastewater services to those communities where they're utilizing a, a water transmission main, where they are getting their water from us, purchasing their water or purchasing sewer for us to take it away from them. And then in the teal color, those are communities where they are utilizing those wholesale systems as well as we provide O and M services to them for their facilities. Next slide, please. Some of the resources that the authority has available is we have access to all of our authority divisions. I mean, you know, we, I mentioned earlier, we operate a regional landfill. We have fiber optic network. We also have a finance department. We have a regional development division. We are not siloed where we don't interact with those other divisions. If assistance is needed, we have access to those services as well to help us out. And then our water quality division can also help those divisions as needed. Some of the systems we use, that we're going to go into a little more detail later on, the GIS system, as I spoke about earlier, SCADA system, a computerized maintenance management system, and a water information management system. And again, we'll go into a little more detail on those. Some of the notable staff that we have that are available to use in our, our facilities, we have twenty-eight certified water and wastewater operators. We have three licensed professional engineers. We have one board certified safety professional. We have project managers, we have controls engineers, we have GIS professionals. We have community planners. We have experts in grant writing and administration. And we have safety and environmental professionals. Next slide, please. And then to speak quickly about the city of Augsburg's facilities, your water is regulated by the New York State Department of Health and your wastewater is regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the D E C. Your water treatment facility is rated one A and your, or excuse me, yes, one A, and your wastewater facility is rated as a four A facility. You also have a eighteen permitted combined sewer overflows within your system. So that is where your storm water does go into your sewer system at times. And those overflows are where it is discharged into the, into the St. Lawrence River or another waterway that we need to monitor. So what does all this mean? Both your water treatment facility and your wastewater facility are, have the highest level of complexity that you can be given in the state. They're very complex systems and there's a very significant and complex regulatory reporting required. Next slide. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Thomas Haynes. Any questions or anything I covered? So we are going to go into more detail on some of those things. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Once again, my name is Thomas Haynes. I'm the Director of Engineering and Development Authority. So next portion, we, while our agreement is for water and waste, water management services, included in that is a number of engineering services that we provide the city as part of that agreement. I know you have the presentation in its entirety here, so we're going to just hit some of the high points on this slide here. These are all the services that are included with your current management services contract. So GIS, your two rapid information system, SCADA, chemical ball storage and spill prevention reports. Those are tied to the sodium hypochlorite that is stored at both the wastewater and water plant. Once sodium hypochlorite is just a fancy word for bleach. In this case, high strength bleach. We'll touch on that a little later. We also provide safety program management for both those facilities in the city as a whole. We assist with service contract procurement. This is, you know, the authority, as Brian showed earlier, we work with a number of municipalities. So when we go out for generator service or crane hoist inspections, we always include the city in those services. You pay for them directly, but because we're procuring them on a larger scale, it generally turns into cost savings for the city. Then we provide intermunicipal agreement assistance and then review of new connection requests for larger connections. So. GIS services. This is one that doesn't just apply to the water and sewer, DPW codes, planning. Just about every department within the city will use this in some form. And really what GIS is, is it's taking data and tying it to a physical location. So making a GPS point, your X and Y, tying it to some form of data, whether it's you're looking at a hydrant or a manhole, water mains, sewer mains. In the case of the city, your zoning is in there along with, we're working on developing your sidewalks, street signs, there's road sign lines, a number of different data attributes are in there. It's really critical for both asset management planning, along with record keeping, you know, a bunch of infrastructures from the early nineteen hundreds. Always have the best records, you know, through the years with operator knowledge, we're able to transform this and put it into a form that can be useful. As we move next slide. So all of the city's data is held on the authorities' end mapping application. There's the snapshot there. Included is twenty-four hours of staff time to make updates. So if the crews are out there and they notice something is incorrect, or if they're like, hey, we replaced a section of main, we can come and make updates to that with no additional charge to the city. Something to highlight is there are currently twenty thousand three hundred and forty-nine data points within the city that are stored in the GIS system. That number is actually currently increasing because we're in the final phase of a grant project that the city was part of to capture the curves, road signs. So this was taken at the beginning of the month and they spent several days over the last month capturing some more data. So that number is increasing. The two black boxes there kind of show the information that's currently in the city's data set. You can see that this curve, sidewalks, water, sewer information. SCADA services. So as Brian mentioned, this stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. What does this really mean? Both of these systems are installed at the water and sewer plant and it allows the operators to record and trend data. But more importantly, when includes alarming and allows you to make changes when you're not directly at the facility. So this here is the SCADA screen for the Augsburg wastewater plant. This was post-capital project. And as you see, so that is the overall system diagram and allows operators to see this remotely and go in and make changes. If something is, they get an alarm and they see that they're out of tolerance or typical set points, they can go in and see in real time, okay, what led up to this, what changes might need to occur. Also with this, there is trending. So if they leave at three thirty, everything's fine. They come in the next day and there's some kind of upset or issue at the facility, they can go back and see, okay, what happened overnight while nobody was there? Then most importantly, if something occurs and they need an operator to respond, the alarming is tied through the SCADA system and will notify the on-call operator that they have to come back to the facility. So CBS and SBI, so chemical ball storage and spill prevention report. The wastewater plant has the capacity to store twenty-eight hundred gallons in round numbers of sodium hypochlorite. Again, that's high strength bleach. The water plant has fifteen hundred gallons. Both of those are used for disinfection. Wastewater, it's disinfecting the affluent before it's discharged. And for drinking water, that's to ensure that the water that's going out to the public is safe to drink. Both of those are required by the D E C. And the reason the city has them stored in large quantities and not in, say, like fifty-five gallon trunks is due to the quantity you go through on a daily basis. And buying it in bulk like that allows for it to be delivered on a tanker truck. And that leads to cost savings overall. However, what that, that means is that you have to have the spill prevention report, which needs to be signed by a professional engineer on an annual basis. And then every five years, a licensed professional engineer has to inspect both of those tanks to ensure that there's no degradation issues. Both of those services are included as part of the authority's agreement. Prior to the authority overseeing the management services at the water and sewer plant, the city used to have to contract that out to a third-party firm and they would complete updates on an annual basis and do the five-year inspections. Safety program assistance. So the authority actually drafted the city's health and safety manual and we do an annual update. This covers both the water and wastewater plant and then, you know, DPW activities. This is brought forward every year to the council for your review. In addition to that, we do annual facility inspections at both the water and wastewater plant. Our health and safety engineer from the authority comes up, does a general housekeeping overview to help identify any concerns that might be presented to the city's employees. As part of that, too, they also do confined space assessments. And to, you know, as like post-capital project, they reviewed all the new spaces and made sure that they were labeled properly because if not, those are items that you can be written up on during a patch inspection. We provide annual staff training. So, you know, as Brian mentioned, we have twenty-eight certified operators. They need a lot of the same safety training that your certified operators need. Tied with that, the certified operators need annual renewal credits. So we structure our safety training in a way where you get D E C and DOH credit hours for attending those trainings. So not only do you get annual training done, you also get your credit hours. And we offer that to the city staff to attend those, to save on some of the renewal fees.
They're part of a partnership.
Yep.
You're training your own people and you're training our people as well at the same time, keeping everybody up to date.
Yep. So when we send out the schedule for our own authority employees, we share it with the supervisors and then they will sign up the city's employees. In the past, prior to COVID, when we did it in person, we actually would partner up and come to the Biscay Center and do presentations there as well.
So to expand on that a little bit, I was going to wait till the end, but thanks, Dan.
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 no.
I was actually thinking about before you got to it, when you got to this, jumping in. So sorry.
That's part of this.
So when we started this partnership originally, that, what, ten years ago now, I think it was, at least, we were in a situation where our employees were retiring. We didn't have people with the correct licenses for the levels that we were at. It's, it's been a wonderful partnership. But could you talk about just a little bit about the partnership with the licenses and our city employees? Because now we've got quite a few employees at both the wastewater and the water treatment plant that are, are licensed to higher levels and how that partnership works with that and what it makes easier for all of us.
Dave, is that part of your?
Did we cover part of that? Okay. I'll, I'll be patient and wait then. Thanks.
Sorry.
No worries. No, 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 no.
So then kind of the last part of that is, you know, we do do job safety analysis and P P determinations that we share with the supervisor at the water and wastewater plant. And then the last slide before I turn it over to Dave is, you know, with the construction of the horse main from the village of Hubelton and as new requests come in for larger connections, the authority has assisted the city in the planning of the intermunicipal agreements as well as reviewing the new connections to make sure that they're technically sound and don't present any long-term operational challenges for the city. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave to speak on the part of the long-term partner.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dave Rowe and the, myself and Christian Foul are the two onsite management team for the water and wastewater treatment facilities. We provide the licensing that Council Stevenson had mentioned. To jump into your question real quick, aside from just obtaining the licenses, there is a much, we'll say, higher level of tax complexity, kind of like Brian had mentioned, to the reports and the data that's, that's collected at those facilities that we kind of supply to the city. Cover some of that in these next couple of slides. First and foremost is the computerized maintenance management system. This is a program where basically we go through and we collect every single asset that the city has for water and wastewater treatment. Total, the city has eight hundred and twenty-five assets at this time. Those assets have several O and M manuals, several documents that, that go along with those that we have to sit down and review and we have to pull out every single maintenance detail that goes along with those assets. We take all that information, compile it into what's considered preventative maintenance plan, which you'll see on the next slide. From those preventative maintenance plans, we develop work orders. These work orders are typically your day-to-day tasks that the operators at the facilities take care of. With those work orders, we also have the regulatory and safety requirements that we cover for the facilities. So this is what a typical asset looks like in our next-gen CMMS program. So here you're looking at asset three thirteen, actuated valve for the horizontal sludge auger. You can see within this, it was installed in twenty twenty-two. In that green circle on the right-hand side, it's got roughly seventeen years of life left. And just below that, you can see that the replacement cost of that asset is roughly five thousand dollars at the time of install. Also on this page, you can see additional key details. You can see the manufacturer, the asset, model number, and then serial number associated with that asset. So when we go to replace a piece of equipment or we go to replace a part on that equipment, we can go directly to this and then either match it one for one or update the database to say, okay, we, this, this asset's no longer in place. We've added a new one and the counter starts over. Also on this page, you can see the O and M manuals that are referenced to this asset and any work orders that would be tied to the asset. So this is what our general preventative maintenance plans look like. So in the top corner where you see name, that is the frequency and then the location that it's tied to. So this one that we're looking for would be a monthly preventative maintenance plan for the water treatment plant. Below that, you will see the specific tasks that are tied to that preventative maintenance plan. And then below that is all the assets that are tied to the PM or work order. Next. One of the other programs that we utilized that Brian had mentioned was the Hawk Wims Program, Water Information Management Solutions. The program is designed basically to collect all of the water and wastewater data across the city's two facilities. Takes that data and it helps us automate the reporting and make the reporting process a little bit more efficient. Replaces the time-consuming days of spreadsheets, manual processing, and constant paperwork. Assists in our monthly regulatory reports for New York State D E C and New York State DOH. Before the authority adopted this program, it was previously done on Excel and handwritten ledgers. As you can imagine, they got very messy and very, very time-consuming. With the many reports that we do, and you'll see them later in this slide, the files for everything. And then one of the big things, the big selling points for this program is reduces operator error when entering data. If this program is set up correctly, if somebody gets in there and tries to enter information that is incorrect or outside of the parameters that you have set, it either blocks it or it will highlight it red and let the supervisor know. So moving to the pre-treatment and significant industrial removal program. This is one of the city's biggest programs that we manage with the wastewater plant. This is not only a New York State D E C requirement, but also an EPA requirement. It requires all of the industrial users within, within the city to basically set up a significant industrial user permit. Within the city, right now you have four industrial users. With this program, it's, the regulatory requirements are constantly changing. The city recently, in twenty twenty-four, underwent an audit for the pre-treatment program through, from the EPA. Took approximately ten hours a day for two days straight to go through just two out of the four facilities. Very, very intense, very labor-intensive. In addition to that, you have physical inspections of the, of each industrial user. This was recently just completed this October. We've completed all four inspections. Complete the headworks and mass analysis performed throughout each year and available loadings. Next slide, please. And then on to, one of the other bigger programs that we have to deal with is the combined sewer over. And then on to, one of the other bigger programs that we have to deal with is the combined sewer overflow related reporting. As Brian had mentioned, the city has eighteen permitted CSOs throughout the system. Once again, this is something that's both regulated by DEC and EPA. My alert notification, some of you may have noticed this coming across. Anytime that there is a significant wet weather event within the city and it activates an overflow at one of these CSOs, we have to issue a public notice letting everybody know that the, the CSOs have overflowed. Leads into the public notification plan. And then the long-term control plan, which was originally established in two thousand and twelve. Basically lays out all of your CSOs and all of the I and I issues that the city has. Compiles that data and kind of gives a ongoing checklist for what must be done to capture eighty-five percent of that CSO flow. Water Quality Management Services. So these are just a quick run-through of every single report that we have to prepare for the water and the wastewater plants. Starting at the top, the annual mercury minimization report and program. One of the big key factors for this is includes an inspection of every single dental facility within the city that includes the prisons as well. Best management practice pertains to the CSOs. Annual SIU permit was your significant industrial report. Annual water treatment chemical report. This is every chemical that is used in the treatment process for the wastewater plant. We have to compile the amount of chemical that we use, use and provide that to the DEC. Annual certification of flow, annual spill prevention. And we'll biosolids reports. That is a compilation of basically your biosolid samples and the amount of sludge you generated in the facility. Once again, another DEC report. And then jump down to the bottom, the annual backflow prevention. So this was something that the city had previously had to hire out to cover. This is a requirement by DOH to have backflows at every potential source of contamination coming back into the water system. This is now done through the authority with one of our three certified inspectors. Jump through to some key reports here. Create a separate asset management plan for the water treatment plant and water pollution control facility. This is something that we've, we've been doing for the last few years. And then engineering is also developing a citywide AMP under a separate agreement. And this would cover your other departments within the city. Thomas had mentioned the bidding on routine maintenance. Set the call program. So this is, the city accepts waste from in different haulers throughout the North Country. Right now you have four on file. Prior to the capital project, DEC had kind of put a hold on the city's ability to accept all sludges or hard waste. After the, after the capital project, we, we were able to go back in, revise the permits, resubmit them to DEC and start accepting waste again. The reason it was put on hold was due to the consent order that was issued around that time. And then back to the Water Quality Management Services continued. Jumping back to the long-term control plan, I'd mentioned this. The facility needs to be able to capture eighty-five percent of the combined sewers and treat them for discharge. Update of the sewer use law. So this was a in our EPA inspection, this was brought up in the pre-treatment inspection. And we have recently gone through and resubmitted this to council to be reviewed. And if, when we finally get our finalized EPA report, if there's any changes in that, the authority will help with those changes as well. So the authority also updates or created and updated the city's health and safety manual. This is generally done by myself or Christian and then provided to the certified safety professional for review.
So I guess I'll follow up if I may. So what started off simply a partnership because we didn't have the correct licensure levels to man both of our plants now has developed into a partnership that offers all of the third-party items that we used to purchase separately. Is that what I'm understanding and that's what I'm seeing? So that's all done as a partnership between our city employees and Development Authority of the North Country. So it's more of a team rolling forward.
Correct.
And then the cost for our employees for training, that's included in our, I'm sure like there's testing and things that have to be paid outside of that, but the training and everything, is that included from the Development Authority of the North Country or is that a separate item?
If it is captured within our safety trainings that we provide, then yes, they'll, they'll get it through that. But if they have to attend individual specialized training, that was still covered by the city.
And that's an assistance to our partnership is having better trained partners from the city. Okay. Thank you very much.
One more question from the audience about a lot of it that you don't want.
Can you ask a question?
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And please, no one thought to ask this. In your opinion, they said when these events happen, a lot of rain and it causes problems at the wastewater treatment facility. And the fact it's also the tool that it could take a week or two for the plant to catch up. In your opinion, new splash pad, if there'd be going to eight to ten thousand gallons a day after one of these events on top of it, the plant trying to catch up with the rainwater that happened, could that cause any more issues on top of what you've been dealing with?
I haven't seen the design drawings for the splash pad, so I can't accurately answer that yet.
Well, if there was eight to ten thousand more gallons of water a day after the rain about coming, let's say it raining, we had two, three days of heavy, heavy rain. Then the splash pads open the following day and it's sunny outside. Could that complicate things at the plant?
No, I'm not. That volume of water is not going to complicate things at the plant.
Okay.
You're processing two million gallons of water a day.
Two to twenty, somewhere in that area.
So eight thousand gallons is literally a drop-off bucket.
Right.
Right. Any other questions or comments from council?
I just appreciate the detailed presentation. It's very informative.
Very informative. A big link here personally, a lot of this for me, but certainly appreciate the, 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 the strab relationship that Dank has with the city and the services that you provide, provide for these very important infrastructures. So thank you.
I'm sure that if we were to pay for these services separately, they'd be a lot more than a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred thousand dollars is still for engineering services. Those are the services that the city is going back to contract with a private engineer firm. That doesn't have anything to do with us supervising and running your plant. That's all the extra stuff that you would have to go out to Dymo or some other consultant.
That's covered under our feet, under this.
And those are services that we are providing with our staff that are not operators, such as the engineers and those other higher-level staff that Thomas mentioned on those slides that cover those engineering services.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have four public hearings tonight. The first is regarding the local law to allow members of council to participate in meetings via video conferencing. It's going to be bill number one oh four. I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium. You will have five minutes.
Hello, Tanya Snyder. I said, I would like to ask the council in reference, in reference to the open public meeting law, that they make it so that we can, they can be heard when speaking at the city meetings. When watching the meetings via online through video conferencing in the past, some council members cannot be heard when discussing topics. I would also like to ask when department heads are asked questions that they step up to the microphone and speak not from their seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Hello, everyone. Tom, you couldn't have said it better than I wanted to. I just want to piggyback on what you just stated, but I will say, this isn't a personal attack. It's just fact. I mean, the videos are on YouTube. Anyone can watch them on the internet. I think there's one thing that Councilwoman Trim has said in her tenure here in the city that has come across those videos. It might be her microphone. I don't know, but it's an issue. This has gone on for very, very long. And you should not be okay with that. Maybe someone needs to do an ethics complaint. I don't know. But someone should not have to be physically in this room to know what is going on. As well, like the meeting, there was a lot of back and forth and there is at other meetings too with the city manager and Shane. The city employees up there and on the videos aren't even in the camera. And you look at water, town, the water, it's crystal clear. You can hear everything that's said, everything that's going on. With Dave's technology, we need to, we need to better ourselves in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. And you will have five minutes to speak.
I do not see any hands raised, ma'am.
So I declare this public hearing closed. The next public hearing is regarding an ordinance to amend the administrative regulations of the city of Augsburg to establish a video conferencing policy. It's going to be bill number one oh five, and I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Wendy Hamilton. I would like the policy, and I'm glad that you're establishing a policy, but I would like the policy to specifically exclude going away for the winter. What do we, I forget what we call that. Snowboarding. Thank you. That's it. You have listed here the things that are extraordinary circumstances, so disability, illness, health concerns, caregiving responsibilities, business trips, or, and here's your out, other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meeting. That should be something significant and not vacation. If you need time off, we all do, please take it. But I think that in the past, what we've seen is prolonged absences due to snowbirding. And I don't think it helps us as citizens to know that our council is away for three or four months at a time. So that's what I would like to see in this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else in chambers?
Yes, Ms. Hamilton just reminded me too. I should have said this when I was just up here. In the past, there was council members who aren't sitting anymore who vacationed and they were remote quite a bit. They always attended through video conferencing, which, which I'm okay with that. If someone's retired or they're doing a good job, they're not here. If, let's say you lived in New York City most of the time and worked there, as long as you're video conferencing and you're participating and doing your job as a councilperson, that, that should be all right. But if someone goes down south for the rest, as long as they're still doing their job, it should be all right. It shouldn't be a huge deal. And there was definitely some hypocrisy. One or maybe two of these in the past really came down on past council members for video conferencing more often than not. And here we are setting up, establishing, you know, laws which would make that okay. So, and I, I think it's okay, but it'd be nice to see everyone treated the same if we are going to call anyone out for not being here during the meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. And you will have five minutes to speak.
The first individual is registered as Penny Shero, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. It appears your line is open.
Good evening. I was trying to get into the comments prior to this on the pool. Could I comment on the pool now or is that not allowed?
You can comment later on your personal appearance. Right now we're focusing on the bill one oh five.
Okay, then I shall wait till that comes back up. Thank you.
I do not see any other hands raised, ma'am.
Then I declare this public hearing closed. The next public hearing is regarding an ordinance to amend section one forty-nine point six of the August municipal code entitled Use of Marina. It is going to be bill number one oh eight, and I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone. Again, we know this public hearing is, this law is being changed or bending that because we gave somebody a ticket who's kept their boat for twelve to fifteen years, they told me, at the marina. And after October first, they might leave their boat for a week or two in the fall fishing season. We treated them like shit. We ticketed them. They went and decided to turn around and tie their boat onto the seawall so it wasn't technically at the dock. And then we turned around and ticketed them. Now we're spending city time and resources to change the law to make it so that individual can't do that again in the future or whatever. And I also saw some language stating that people could pay a fee to leave their boat there. Theres and Hosmer's Marina both have open slips and they're not full. And they're a lot less money and they don't treat people like that. I keep my boat at one of the marinas. And if I'm there past the, the time allowed or the lease, it needs to be out of there before I take it out. I'm just told a simple phone call, hey pal, we're pulling the docks. Get your boat out of there. It's, it's not that complicated of a scenario. And it's not good business. And maybe people should bring their business salt work. That's how the city wants to treat them. Thanks.
Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. You will have five minutes to speak.
I do not see any hands raised, ma'am.
I declare this public hearing closed. Last public hearing is regarding a local law establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications and permits and permits for battery energy storage systems in the city of Augsburg is going to be bill number one oh eight. And I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes to speak.
I know this isn't a question and answer session, but can, can anyone up at the table explain where this came about? Was it state mandated? Are we doing this on our own? Where did this whole battery energy storage this, this whole ordeal, where did this come from or surface from?
We can speak to this when we bring it to the floor for reaction.
Okay, if the city's against solar systems, I don't know what it would be. If it's a state mandated thing, I understand, but anything beyond state regulations, you guys shouldn't be mandating anything. If someone wants to have battery storage or store power, that's on them. That's not, not your decision. Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raise hand feature in the upper right-hand corner. please use the raise hand feature in your upper right-hand corner of your screen and you will have five minutes to speak.
I do not see any hands raised, mayor.
So I declare this public hearing closed. That brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. I watched a water and sewer budget workshop last week, and the fire chief explained that the charge for the water and sewer user fee for home business has nothing to do with the consumption of water. I agree with that. That is what we've been saying all along. The fire chief explained this is based on whether or not you're operating a business out of your home while making money. If that's the case, then why aren't all home businesses in the city paying the additional fee? The code enforcement office already knows of many businesses that are operating and not paying the fee. And now that the misconception of water usage is gone, they can now be charged for just operating a business. It is not a voluntary issue. If the city is going to charge people for operating a home business, then the city has an obligation and is responsible for ensuring that everyone is being charged appropriately when they become aware of the business. It should be up to the code, it should be up to the code enforcement office to determine whether a person is operating a home business, not for the homeowner to tell them if they are or not. If the code enforcement office has a good evidence that a homeowner is operating a business, then charge them. If the homeowner disagrees, then make them prove that they aren't. I think the fire chief is perfectly capable in determining if someone is running a business based on information and evidence that he has or can get through advertising, social media, word of mouth, or common knowledge. I don't care where you charge the fee. I do believe it should be a permit fee. But since the water consumption issue is gone, now we're just charging people a user fee for having a home business. So charge them. At least four council members agree that the way this is currently being done is not right. It's been almost two years, so the council needs to either eliminate it, suspend it, or fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been hearing this home-based business water issue for way too long. And sitting city council members' right is to put forth something that's called a resolution. I don't know if you all realize that or not. But what I would do if I was one of them chairs, I would have done it a long time ago. It's pretty simple. I would put forth the resolution for the following city council meeting, ending discharge for the home-based businesses and the daycare providers until a different system's figured out or just entirely we're all together. The city's not even making $2,000 from it. And here we are, you know? It's been a long time. A lot of people have been here numerous times and you guys just sit there and look at them. I'm sure they feel like they're talking to a brick wall. But if you Google, in a municipality, we charge a home-based business and only one group such as daycare providers, and not all the businesses, it is discrimination. And I Google it and it says it is. Google's not an attorney. We haven't had the city attorney up at this podium at all. Then this entire administration just make any of these statements, whether it's that or anything else. Closing the diamond property without you guys voting. We quit allowing the Maple City Trail, no one voted on that in the wintertime. You guys think you put forth resolutions, do your job. You can all vote and the voters can see where you stand on it. It's plain and simple. You all let the city manager make all the decisions and then hide behind the city attorney who's never here and never gets up to the podium and puts the money where the mouth is. I'm sorry, but if we're going to say there's legal reasons, like anything shouldn't be done or not be done. We need the manager here at this podium stating the reasons of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to change topics. I'd want to say thank you to have the administration for holding the hearing today on the pool, on the pool design, et cetera. At the last council meeting, we talked a little bit about this, but I'm getting more clarity. So I want to correct some things. It's not 8,000 gallons of water a day. In the, what they call the SEAKER, it was noted as 86,400 gallons a day based on three splash pads. So if you say now that we're going to go with two, then two-thirds of that, et cetera. You can figure it out. If we look at the cost of that, because we want to run water and sewer like a business, because that's the only part of this that we can, then that equates to about $900 a day. If that was being sold to a private entity, a private pool. That's pretty expensive. I want to know, oh, the other thing that you should know, Dan, is that children under 12 cannot go into the pool alone. So the issue of having young kids at Splash and then in the pool and needing to watch them, it's moot because you can't have children under 12 unsupervised in the pool.
Which is all homework, I believe.
No, because you're not going to have the young children left at the splash pad, right? So the children are going to be there because you'd have to bring them all in. You'd have to, you can't leave a little one at the Splash either.
I know.
So you can't watch them from both places. So you're...
Lost my point.
Well, no, so you'd have to make a choice. You can't, you can't, yeah. So what's the capacity of the splash pad? Do we know that? Last council meeting, we talked about the reason for having the additional splash pad was because what if Boys and Girls Club dropped off 30 to 40 kids? Today, it was, well, what if Boys and Girls Club dropped off 60 to 80 kids? I know there was one splash pad in the grant. Now there's two. And I think splash pad is a nice-to-have, but it's not a need-to-have. And I don't think we can afford it. And I'm looking at what are the future costs associated with this splash pad? It's going to be maintenance. We've got to build that into our budget. There's going to have to be some supervision. We're going to have to build that into the budget. I just wonder, you know, have we really thought that all out and projected out all those costs for this nice-to-have thing? And finally, I hope that we're doing something about collaborating with OFA for use of the pool for next summer because it was very clear that that, the pool, and it's wonderful, all the renovations, the design, everything that they're suggesting is fabulous and we need it. But it's going to take the entire construction season. So the pool will be closed, which is, I know why we wanted to do splash pads first if kids placed it. Are we doing anything to use the pool at OFA? We're taxpayers, you know, we pay for that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers?
Good evening. My name is Arlene Kaya, home daycare business provider. Yes, I'm one of the 12 on the list that's paying more taxes due to home-based business. This started two years ago. I started coming to meetings a year ago. Like I told you before, this is crazy. I can't believe you opened this can of worms. So the first year, council didn't want to be bothered with it. So another year goes, never did we get any updates unless we foiled our own request. Council was not working for taxpayers. The taxpayer had to do all the work for them. Council voted to change it, and some council members have home businesses. And the city manager had this all in play. He also has a home business at his address. All should have been nothing to do with this vote. So a big plan goes into effect, affidavits, got out, got mailed out. But they were nothing but a joke because no one forced the affidavits. Because if you look at the list, 13 businesses are paying the taxes, three that already were paying, and the 12 daycare providers. You will see that is a joke if you look at the list. If you live in Augsburg and you don't work for the city of Augsburg, I'm sure you would know home businesses are going on addresses and a lot more home businesses out there besides 13. You should start right, you should start right with the council members at this point because some of them have home-based businesses. You weren't going to charge anybody that had a desk in their home. Well, that's not, you weren't going to charge anybody with a desk in their home. So that's not true because one of 13 is just that. We have said before, home-based business is a home-based business, but you have not handled this matter right from the beginning. A lot of gray areas, yes, you are kicking and choosing and not doing anything to change it. It's been over a year. We asked to have a meeting, but it was a no-go. The sad thing is, this makes another joke for this year. Not everyone paid the $165. But maybe if the council would work together and communicate, things could be different. You have four people working in codes, but the sad thing is... I lost my train of thought. Four people working in codes. The sad thing is, you didn't work, you didn't do your homework on how you were going to handle this matter at all. So here we at, so here, we had a budget meeting after a year. That's when, after it went into effect after a year. This is the most I've heard council talk about the matter. Yes, like I said before, Augsburg has bigger problems to deal with. Also, taxpayers need to remember, this year is election year. As we asked, is free to do this fair and be honest and get everybody? And you haven't. We have asked to talk, we have asked to take it off of water and sewer, but nope. In the budget session, it was said we are paying now is a water user fee. So all this business, so all businesses should pay now, not just a few. I also feel some raises need to be given back to the city. Yeah, we have a lot of lack of management. Yeah, we have a lot of lack of management. When we hire people, do we check backgrounds and work experience? I'm giving a copy of this to Kathy to put in a minute.
Thank you, Arlene.
Good evening, mayor and city council members and fellow residents. My name is Kylie Morrow, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of many home-based business owners, including family daycare providers who continue to face unfair treatment under the city's current water and sewer fee structure. I read the mayor's response from May 27th carefully, and it lays out the history of this issue, but it also highlights exactly what this policy remains, why this policy remains unfair and unresolved. Let's start with the most important fact. The city of Augsburg does not have water meters. That means that there is no accurate way to measure or verify who uses more water or produces more sewage. Every household in the city, regardless of the size or business activity, is charged based on assumptions, not evidence. The mayor himself acknowledged this in his statement that a flat-rate system, there are going to be inequities. He is absolutely right. And yet, instead of fixing that inequity, the city has chosen to add additional charge for a small group of residents operating legal home businesses. This does not correct the problem. It simply shifts the burden from one group of taxpayers to another without any factual basis for doing so. This entire situation began, as the mayor also stated, because some taxpayers felt they were being overcharged while others were not. That was the original concern. But here we are, a year later, and the same core issue still exists. Inequitable billing in a system that cannot measure actual use. So I ask, why were concerns of those individual taxpayers more valid than the current concerns of the taxpayers who are being unfairly targeted by this new fee? If the goal was fairness, how is it fair to select few home businesses that are now being charged more, even though there are still no data showing that they use more water or produce more sewage than anyone else? We've also heard that the city hopes to install meters. That's an excellent long-term step. But until then, the city is operating at a policy that everybody acknowledges is inherently inequitable. Continuing to charge an arbitrary fee, whether it be $1,000 a year or $165 a year, does not make the system fairer. It simply makes it more complicated and more unjust. Many home-based businesses in the community, especially family daycare providers, are not high-volume commercial users. We are serving local families, providing an essential service, childcare, in supporting Augsburg's workforce. Penalizing these small licensed state-regulated businesses discourages local entrepreneurship and directly harms working parents who rely on us. So tonight, I ask respectfully for council to take a closer look at this policy and consider the real meaning of fairness. Fairness means equal treatment under the same circumstances. Fairness means that if the city can't measure usage, it shouldn't make assumptions about who's using more. Fairness means that every taxpayer's concerns, whether raised first or last, deserve equal respect and attention. If this community truly wants an equitable solution, it begins with ending this unfair fee until water meters are installed or we have real data to guide the policy's decisions. Thank you for your time and for listening to residents, small business owners who continue to invest in Augsburg's future.
Thank you, Tanya.
Tanya Snyder, Home Business. I would like the city council, ask the city council about home business. Before I opened my home business, I was required by the code enforcement office to have an electrical inspection by third party. A contractor to come in and install a fan through the wall of my house with an initial inspection to receive a certificate of occupancy before I could even open my business. I just recently had another home inspection for the fee of $90. This is a code process that allows somebody to operate a home business. How are the other home businesses in the city that have been recently added and are being charged for the additional water and sewer sewer fees able to operate with going through the same process to get the certificate of occupancy that I did? Even though these businesses were discovered after the fact, are these businesses going to have to get an inspection and a certificate of occupancy to be able to continue operating their business? If not, then it's not fair. It's not a fair process. And that is not a fair process to the ones that had to follow the process. The reason I'm asking this is that there has been no mention of inspection, certificate of occupancies, in addition to the additional water user fees. Maybe council should suspend all fees on home businesses as some council has suggested until city staff can plan, get a plan in place and review the entire process, which needs to be done for somebody to be operating a home business. Because right now, it's not fair. You say that it's never going to be fair, but inspections and certificate of occupancies are required to run a home business. You're talking about having no revenue, that there's a lot of lost revenue and that hasn't been collected. You know, I've done tons of boils. So I can't tell you how much money the city hasn't collected for permit fees, signage fees, inspection fees, home business fees. Maybe we wouldn't be in such a bad financial position if the people were doing their jobs and holding their employees accountable for their performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize one mute, one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
The first individual is registered as Penny Shero, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
Okay, this is, I think this is the time I could talk, hopefully. I did go attend that media presentation down to Biskie, which I thought was very nice. I wish more people had gone. I did go attend that media presentation down to Biskie, which I thought was very nice, I wish more people had gone. Am I happy with what I saw? Not necessarily. All right, um. A lot of the stuff was preceded or finished with Watertown does this, Watertown does that. We aren't Watertown, all right. I ran the city beach here for a number of years back in the seventies. I've run the city pool on and off for probably twenty years. Practicality to me. Overseas, overseas or. How does any of the aesthetics that people are presenting? I know they say the. The water rates have just gone up and now we're going to pay. To dump water back, the water that potable water, because it must be potable water according to health department. Water rates go up and now we're paying to dump it back in the river. Some people may be under the impression that this splash pad is going to use river water and just throw it back in there. No, it doesn't, there's more to it than that. All right, also according to the health department. All spray pads must be enclosed with a, with a fence or other variety prevent access by patrons of animals and the spray pads not supervised. There's no, there's no fence in those plants. They're leaving it open, whether they control the water distribution or not, there's no fence appropriating those plants to my knowledge. So there's another cost right there. It needs to be supervised. There are lists of rules that you're going to have to post according to the health department. All right, no animals are on or near the spray pad, you don't have a fence, you're not going to prevent that. All right, pollution of the spray pad area is prohibited. They're telling you that any children not toilet trained need to wear a swimming diaper to cover the rubber pants. Who's going to say you have to leave because you don't have swimming diapers on? Then the argument's going to rise, well, they're not swimming. All right, you don't look at the, you're not looking at the big picture in regards to some of this stuff, and that's where some of the practicality needs to come about. In my opinion, of course, my opinion doesn't mean much, I only have forty years of working on your riverfront or trying to get it going. We're not Watertown, I just dotted notes down, so I had to look at these. Need to close it, public area project was good, pretty, but not practical. I mean, it's just not practical. In regards to the ramp going in, yes, it does, does take care of the ADA compliance to my knowledge, unless they expect a railing of some sort. The, the concrete entry as compared to a sand entry at a beach, you know, comparing it to a beach. Maybe you need a railing of some sort, which case, there's no reason why they can't move that, that entrance that they're talking about to the other side of the pool. And leave the baby pool where it is. Sorry, Jen, but no chain has opinion, I have mine, I also been down there for swim lessons for a number of years. But the baby pool is a teaching station, it's also a station where kids get acclimated to the water. They get to be comfortable in the water, the parents sit on the side of that pool. And, and watch and to talk and watch their kids there, sitting on the side with it being a graduated entrance is not practical in our aspect. Some people haven't even been down to that pool, see how often it's used and what areas are used. Then they mentioned something about closing the deep end, that didn't make any sense at all. All right, oh, well, then they'll play volleyball and basketball, no, there's not enough room, even when you do have it. That, that pool gets used and used a lot. And if people would visit it more often, they could see some of the practicality I'm talking about. We moved everything over, so hopefully things could have started being, you know, on the road this, this past summer when we closed, because we closed in early August or middle of August. Hoping that some of the gutting can be done to that locker room, that's what needs the attention, the pool needs attention definitely. But that UCA pool they're presenting really doesn't have any practical use, except when they're trying to push this beach entrance thing that they're talking about. The stairs worked fine in that pool and our handicap lift was nice. I can see getting rid of the handicap lift and doing maybe a small beach entrance, but not using up a whole quarter of the pool. To have some kind of entrance into the pool. It's going to be slippery, there's a lot of things that, that I don't think they really consider, all right, and, but that's my opinion. I hate to see it not open next year, that things couldn't have been done in a more timely fashion. Cause you're talking about close to twenty lifeguards that will have no jobs and I'm sure the parents will be thrilled with that. But it just seems to me it could have been fit into a time span where it could have been done and the pool could have been fixed. All right, um, let me see, sitting outside, no good, oh, and by the way, if one, if one of those kids has an accident in that pool. With their proposed no baby pool, then we have to close the whole pool. And that means everybody out until it's either shock, brought back to normal levels, or for the rest of the day. So there's a lot of practical approaches to this, a diplomatic approach, and hopefully they talk to the health department. In regards to some of the things that are going to be, need to be done. Thank you for listening to, no, they also call for foot showers before you get in the pool. So if any, you know, anything, anyone has any questions or anyone has any answers to anything for me, I'd appreciate it, but. I hope there's more, this looks like it was a done deal before I even looked at it. And it's too bad if mine's evolved and made up without looking a little further into some of the things. I'd appreciate some consideration of some of the things I said. Cause I think I've, I've tried to keep this program going and people were thrilled that that baby pool was opened back up, was closed for four years. So it's a teaching station, it's a station where people can talk and I have a solution for them, but no one seems to listen to it. So if anyone has any questions on anything, fine, I'll give a call, other than that, good luck. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Penny.
I do not see any other hands raised, Mayor.
That brings us to correspondence, we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
That brings us to our consent agenda. That the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number twenty dash twenty twenty-five, amount of one million three hundred sixty-five thousand eighty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. And library warrant number twenty dash twenty-five, amount of zero dollars. Capital fund warrant number twenty dash twenty-five, in the amount of ninety-three dollars, ninety-three thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. And community development fund warrant number twenty dash twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. And community renewal fund warrant number twenty dash twenty-five, in the amount of zero dollars, as logged it being the same year by that order paid, I so moved.
Second.
Kathy, which please call the law.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Tebow?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments soon, so that brings us items for council action. Our first item in the business, we went by city manager upon the crones.
A local law.
It was.
All right, that is better. A local law to allow members of council to participate in meetings via video conferencing.
I'll move that.
Second.
Comments or discussion? Kathy, please call the law.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Tebow?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item in the business will also be read by city manager upon the crones.
An ordinance to amend the administrative regulations of the city of Augsburg to establish a video conferencing policy.
Okay, um. Recognizing there may be questions about this panel, so I know I have a few. With council squad, I've invited city attorney Scott Goldie to join us today, so Mr. Goldie, if you would come to the podium, please. To answer questions we might have, and if you don't mind, I'll take the lead on this. One thing I would like to clarify with regards to the proposed policy. In that primarily its focus is on attendance or participation by video conferencing. When a member of council is in, is in an area that. Where the public is unable to sit in. Is that a fair assessment of the, of what policy?
When the member is not available to sit in. But maybe I did.
The, the question is, if, if a member of council out of town. Is able to participate by video conferencing in a public area. In an area where the public has ability to join him or her for that meeting. Then the elements of the policy as it relates to inspections.
So I think what you're referring to is the, the fact that you can have, that give the public notice. Of the location where the meeting will take place. And it's possible for the, for the, the council to identify multiple locations where a meeting will take place. So, so long as the public is, can, can attend at that location. And you have a, a council member present at that location, then that, this policy doesn't apply.
Right, and, and it does apply where a member of council is in an area where the public is unable for whatever reason to attend.
Correct.
So the, the, the member, let's say, is in a hotel room and they might, do not want the public to be in that hotel room. So therefore they would have to meet one of the criteria in the policy to be able to video confer and participate.
That's correct, so it has to be a place. Where the, the public can have access to that location. So if, if it were, it's a, a member of council was out of town and. And, and the, the city chooses to give notice of a location where they're out of town. Let's just say that they can go to a library, they can go to, basically, it should be a public, publicly accessible location. And then the, if the, the council person is there at that location, the public can be there at that location. It's been properly noticed, it's accessible, and it meets the public meeting law requirements, so. Kind of coming back around to this policy, policy is not necessary for that, that's already permissible under the open meetings law. So again, so long as that, that location is given notice to the public. And I think what you need to back away from and look at is. All of this is under the statute for the open meetings law. The purpose is to make the, the meetings of, of our government. Readily accessible to, to the public, so that they can see, they can witness, they can participate in that. So the, so the, the law that you just enacted for video conferencing with the, the council. Participating via video conference from, from a remote location because they have to be away for some purpose. That, the, the statute is provided so that that. That can still, that the public aspect can still be accommodated. That the, that the council can still conduct business. And it can still have, and the, the absent, or I shouldn't say absent, but the remote located council member is. Is still able to participate and do the people's business. Despite the fact that they may have some personal reason to be out of the area. And if you go back, if you go to public officers law, section one oh three A, which is providing for you to pass this law to have a policy for this. It's all to balance against the need for. The council to, to still be able to meet its quorum requirements at a location. And quorum can be met. Under the, the general principle of, of the open meetings law, if there are two different meeting locations. But this is when there's only one and the council member is away.
Okay.
Have I done a good job confusing?
My communications earlier, I asked about. So I was in a hotel room and I don't care if the public comes into my hotel room. If I make it accessible to them, it's allowable.
Well, again, this is, this is. This is already permissible without having passed this law without this policy. So long as the notice that the city sends out, giving the public notice of a meeting. Identifies the location where you will be and that they're able to go there as well as here at city hall. But I have some concerns if you, if you picked. Your hotel room, let's just make it up that you were in Albany. Because this, and if we gave that exact location in the public notice where they could go. Is it truly accessible? Are they going to feel that they can be there present? And I'll, obviously, they have to be able to. View everything through the video conference as well.
I'm just curious, that's the way, the notice has always been worded since we've started the policy. They've always given notice that the council will be at such and such an address and the public's welcome to attend at that address. And that, that wording needs to continue, correct?
That's, that, that is, that is just fine, correct.
So I, I would have a follow-up question to that, so. I'm one of the counselors that take advantage of video conferencing and I have from the beginning. But I have always had it in like the business center at the hotel, so I was easily found. Now, a few times, because the business center was unusually loud, I did attend from my room with an open door. But would, would I then have to have that room number?
Of course.
Noticed, so how, so if I were staying in a hotel, I would have to say that I am at the Marriott marquee in room number ten zero four. So that would have to be noticed the Wednesday before the meeting, so that that I would count as the quorum, correct?
Correct.
But under this policy. If you are on a video conference because you're away for a business reason. You wouldn't have to participate from a space open to the public.
Only if I wanted to count as part of a quorum.
Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
So in order to be part of the quorum and take the pressure off. The council members, because I know I had a situation this spring when we had counselors away. And my wife was taken by ambulance to the hospital and I participated in the discussion, but not in the vote. Because I did not notice it previous. That puts undue pressure on the rest of council to have to be there. Cause we didn't have, oh no, I think that was the case that we needed five votes, because it was the, the lease of the, of the Dubisky Center. So that was because we needed five, we did have a quorum, but I was the majority, the super majority necessary for that lease. So that's why I think it's important that we be cognizant that. If we're going to count as a quorum, we have that very clear, that it has to be exact. So it's easier to say, I'm at the business center and then stay in the business center, because that doesn't change, but your room number might change. I might get to the hotel and you don't have your room number assigned to you until you get there. So you can't really notice that properly. Am I correct in that thought process?
Yes.
And if it were, so say I was in an Airbnb, let's just say that, and I was in a gated community. Then that's not accessible to the public, even if I gave the address.
If they can't get there, that's correct.
Okay.
So to follow up, so if, I'm not part of the quorum. But I meet one of these extraordinary circumstances, I can still participate in the meeting, discuss the meeting, vote on resolutions to come before the meeting?
That is correct.
With regards to, I think, items B one, A two, B are pretty front-explanatory, but the, as was mentioned, the catch-all, F being other significant or unexpected factor. How broadly can that be interpreted?
Well, first of all, I think it, you had, you had given me your, your questions in advance.
Yes.
And one of the things that you had pointed out, which I, I agree with, is certainly if you can provide some examples, because this is, this is a document to guide your own behavior. Okay, and you can, you can then identify those things that you do believe are, are appropriate and, and those that are not. And, and maybe one other thing that I think you need to keep in mind. This is a policy not just for council, but for your planning board, your zoning board, appeals, your other, other public boards that meet. And certainly sometimes I've noticed in other communities, you have a difficult time getting people to, to be on the board in the first place. You know, getting them together if they don't meet regularly. So I, you know, I think you need to be thinking not just for yourselves, but also for these other smaller boards. Of, you know, how you can accommodate. Their needs and also the balance of the needs of the city. To make sure that you that the people you've you've appointed can can be there, can act and and accomplish what's needed because you certainly, if you if you don't have a quorum or if you don't have enough people to to vote. Then then some applications to a planning board, zoning board of appeals, it can be generative later date.
So I'm sorry, so I I thank you for for offering that observation, Scott, because hearing that, and again, I have other questions as you may as well. I think before we take action at this, we're certain must circulate these all these respective boards, we're going to have opportunities to review it and react to whether or not for coming back to council.
I agree.
Is that for a second? Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Under uh section BF.
What is that, Scott?
Under B, under section BF where it says other significant or unexpected. Would we be safe in just dropping the words significant or unexpected out of that line?
Well, first of all, that all of this language is coming as an example from the from the statute.
Straight from power. And they're coming from the statute itself or just as an example?
No, that's that's what.
Statue, okay.
And I didn't put this together, I think the city staff put this together using a model from somewhere else. But you are to make this your own. And and it's for you to decide what these terms will be. And it doesn't necessarily have to be that it's a that it's a hardship. Because what you're trying to accomplish here is to have your board members actively participate in the governance. And to to because the the consequences, they still may be out of town for personal reasons. But now they're just absent completely and not able to add input.
Okay, one of the questions I believe Mike had addressed earlier is who makes that determination? Is that up to each individual board member or city clerk or the mayor who who determines whether it's a significant event?
I don't know that I have an answer to that. And I think it has to do with um first, are are you saying that if you were out of town? And 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 you told everyone you were going to be participating by a video conference? That in advance, somebody said, we're not going to let you participate?
Let's say that uh the mayor and myself are feuding over a bill and he doesn't want my vote to go a certain way. And I uh I expressed my intent to participate in a video conference and somebody on the council says, no, that doesn't meet the criteria. Who who's the arbitrator there?
There there isn't one stated in here. I don't know that there's one necessarily implicit. I think if you had if the whole council voted. And the vote was to exclude you, then then that may have some effect. But that doesn't mean that you can't certainly legally challenge your your dismissal.
We're we're talking a matter of two days or whatever to make a challenge on that. That's timeframe, just where do we go with that?
Well, I guess what would happen is in that type of circumstance, if you tried to video conference in and the mayor says, I want to vote, we're all going to vote, but you can't participate because this violated the policy. And then they go ahead and and pass the law that the mayor wanted. You could then theorizing here, you could legally challenge that you were improperly excluded.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So but you may you may want to put in your policy here of how how that determination could be made. But I should I should think it wouldn't be one individual, but rather perhaps it's the whole council.
So my question would be because we have had technical difficulties um over the years and you could have loss of internet service where you're video conferencing from. If your camera's not working, then you're not participating in that meeting then because you're not visually accessible to the public.
That's correct, and and I think that's already stated in the law that you just passed.
Right.
That these that there are certain things that have to be present.
Well, we just had it happen in the past. That's why I asked that question to clarify. So at that point, if that happened to me, I could be um listening in on the meeting, uh but I couldn't vote then uh because I'm not participating. The way the former city clerk explained it to me when we first started using video conferencing was and this is a stretch, but this is how she explained it was, we don't know if somebody is there coercing you into voting because we can't visually see you and know that you're well and okay and making your own decisions. That's what how she explained it.
I'm gonna lie.
It would be, but here camera's gone.
Well, yeah, you have to be disinterred and you have to be heard. Yes.
Full scenario, I mean, I meetings are on Monday nights. I get two weeks in February to go to Florida. I could video conference in from Florida, totally legal.
Absolutely.
As long as I tell them where I am.
Yeah, Wednesday before me.
Wednesday, okay.
And and that that time is set in by by law, right? It's not negotiable, the amount of time you have to give.
Again, I want to make sure that we're talking, there are two different possibilities.
Right.
One is that your that notice is given saying, this is where I will be and this and the public can attend and be present at this location. And if you were in Florida and you gave your address and that was given in the public notice, this policy doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply, okay.
But if say, for example, you were en route to to a place in Florida. You have your phone with you, you're in the car. You can you following this policy, you can then participate so long as you're visible and you're communicating that they can that the public can see you, council can see you, you can see everything and and hear. Then that then that's fine.
Again, that that presumes that a vacation is another an other significant or unexpected factor. Unless we delineate specifically vacations will be considered that way.
That's that's correct. That's correct. But the alternative is Mr. Timbo's not present for your meeting.
Right, so.
Can't vote.
So no, but he no, he he he.
I'm using this example.
So he's in the car. So he's video conferencing in a non-public place. And if vacation is considered another uh other significant event, then he can participate in discussion, he can vote on resolutions.
As long as he's not a part of the quorum.
But that's not he's not part of a quorum for purposes of the councils, the whole to conduct its business.
Is that the way you interpret that?
For more here or for more in a public.
Also look at F and read it, it says other significant or unexpected. So significant doesn't necessarily mean this has to be a hardship.
Okay.
It's it's and and you may, considering we're having a big discussion about this, you may want to say, does this involve? As as you'd said, I'm going to a wedding, is this, does this involve a vacation? Because again, what you're trying to accomplish is continue to have all active participants of your council in as many meetings as possible. But balancing against, you have to have a quorum of those present at a meeting place.
And then the one video conferencing or phone conferencing can participate and vote.
Yes.
That was not the case before or we misunderstood it?
I misunderstood it. Thanks for the clarification. Essentially, I thought I thought I turned out present because of the video aspect of it.
Right.
You know, that you that you wouldn't be able to participate, which I thought was kind of, but I I just assumed it was part of the whole statute. But now with this, I I I understand it just a lot much better. Like with the past council, there was a councilman that stayed in Florida for months on end and then he was participating. That was COVID related, I believe.
I believe this is one of the reasons why we're doing.
I'm sorry, no, I was gonna say, I believe COVID regulations in place under COVID allowed for that.
Right.
Those uh that allowance ended in twenty twenty four sometime, right?
Okay.
Those regulations became dormant, I guess.
Okay.
So maybe I'm hearing something incorrectly, but could I just clarify this? So if there are the um unexpected factors and I want to participate and I it's okay for me to participate, but I am not considered part of the quorum, but I still have to be visually seen.
Correct.
Right, so I can't just be on my phone. I have to be visually seen with my eyes. It has to still be visual.
Unless we add that aspect to the phone.
But that's not a video conference.
It does not have a video conference. Right, that's why I just wanted to clarify that point.
We would be separate.
The way I'm listening to that is I'm using the example of in my car. And everybody else is here. When I give notice that I'm gonna be traveling. Um at that point, the notice from the city clerk only has to say where the where the uh public can attend rather than where I'm attending from.
Well, if you're not in in the area or the arena where the public can attend. Then you're attending in a non-public area.
Yeah.
And then falls subject to this policy.
This is where I'm I'm looking at this this. Paul has two separate policies, one if I'm in an area where the public can attend and one if I'm in an area where they can't attend.
The the policy that you're acting is for when they're the public can't be, that that there isn't this second public meeting place. The public can attend.
So the whole purpose is about defining a quorum and whether or not you you're you're absence or your remoteness, I guess. Uh defines whether or not you're you're part of quorum or not. I mean, that's that's the gist of this, right?
Yeah, but you can participate.
But you're still participating, you're just not, you haven't been established quorum.
Not counted as part of the quorum. That is correct.
So could I just can vote?
Yes. You could.
You can vote, okay. So my question would be just to use a real life scenario. So when I thought I was going to be at city council, but at four o'clock, my wife is taken by ambulance to the hospital. And then I'm able to reach the city clerk. I could still set up my laptop from the hospital room and I could participate even though it hasn't been noticed as a non-quorum member, but still be able to participate and vote.
Right.
Okay.
Even though there was no notice given the timeline before the Wednesday prior to the meeting?
I mean, we have to go back to the law that you just passed.
It's a significant or unexpected. Or caregiver. That's why I'm trying to use a real life example so that we can clarify.
If you're participating um through video conferencing in an area not open to the public. I don't believe any notice has to be provided other than it says the mayor has to announce to the public that Councilor Smith is attending my video conference, but just my video conferencing. And nothing notice is required.
In a private place like a hospital or something.
So that was my question, like to use another real life example. Last um six months or so ago, three months ago, I was traveling in Europe and I didn't know where I was going to be for sure on the night of the city council meeting. But I had to give the notice by a certain time, so I chose my daughter's dorm room. And I I then was not in that location. I had to go to great lengths to get to that location because that's where I said I was going to be. And I didn't, but I wondered like if you give that notice, then you can't be in that place. And you can you do it from somewhere else? And if you do that, can you vote? Because my understanding at the time is that if I did that, I wouldn't be able to vote.
Under this policy, you can't, so it has.
I can't, so I wouldn't be able to.
Yeah.
Notice twenty four for a special.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So you do have to.
Yeah. So even if you're participating as not a member of the quorum. The policy still requires notice to advise the mayor, manager and city clerk or leader for P on a Wednesday before a regular meeting. Or as soon as possible, but no less than twenty four hours prior to a special meeting. And then the public notice shall inform the public video conferencing will be used. So in the situation you're describing, council where, you know, you're taking care of your spouse, taking care of you know, and that. You couldn't participate to video conferencing as a member of council. But you could remote in as a citizen, watch the meeting that way and offer comment during personal appearance.
I I don't I don't I don't agree with that with that interpretation. I guess I'd like clarification because my interpretation in the past had been if you couldn't give your notice where you were and it was unusual circumstances. That you could participate as a counselor, you just couldn't vote if you didn't notice and if it was an emergency. That's the way when I went to um session um for local government, that's the way it was explained. But again, it's all depends on the interpretation. We didn't, we hadn't enacted this law yet, so this is new. That's what we need to clarify.
But it came out in state law.
Came out. No, this was after.
This is after COVID, but the COVID restrictions have been in place.
No, it was last.
COVID modified everything related to video conference and we kind of loosened up the strings a little bit in that aspect, right? So then is that what you're referencing possibly?
No, not not really. I I guess what I was referencing is that we're hearing this and I'm hearing it one way and mayor, you're hearing it another way and and we're reading it and that's why I want clarification with that. It's those exact scenarios. That's why I'm using the exact scenario so we have clarification.
You have to give notice, but you don't have to give notices to the per choice of location where the public has to.
So I have to know I have an unusual that I have an unexpected factor Wednesday before the event happens.
In order to video conference at all.
Right.
But if all of it is so that the notice that goes out is letting the public know that one of the members is going to be participating by a video conference.
Right.
So here's a guarantee, they cannot participate by video conference, correct?
Focus on the situation here.
Yeah.
Um council will get its business done.
I'm sorry, Dan, what did you say?
I wouldn't be focusing on the business at hand if it's an emergency.
I'm guessing, you know, the way I'm looking at this is if I'm in an area that's not open to the public. All I have to do is notify the clerk by four P M. on the Wednesday before. I don't have to tell him where I am or anything else as long as she puts in a message where the public can view the meeting, they can attend the meeting.
And that you're gonna that you will be participating by.
And I don't have to specify where I am. Like I don't have to say I'm somewhere on Route eighty one or somewhere in an airplane between L A and Denver or whatever, right?
I I don't.
I don't see anything in there. So it's not particular when I have to say where I am. I just am gonna be participating by video conference.
Right.
We so we're gonna table this this evening so that we can.
I uh I have some comments. Snowbirding, political season, elections out, last three month, last year, three months I spent. For I've invested in a place of glory again this this one. For for a couple of months, two definitely, possibly three. So going forward. This in place, this law for the the one that we're talking of now, that we're gonna take would possibly be possibly be amended to add to avoid snowbird. It was it was brought up and and Sessi and I imagine it's going to be coming off this desk at some point, you know, when it when it gets comes off the table. So with that being said, recognizing everything else in this and of the fact that don't contain to necessarily snowbirding, but potential employment for certain individual, namely myself, uh possible remote work out of a company out of Tampa that I may be going down to interview for, but it's strictly remote work. My residence is in Austin, first, I'm a resident of Austin, first. I am on the ballot. And if that were to get added, how would that get enforced by a local? by a local? Can it be enforced? Or if they were to add snowbirding, basically saying, I can't go to Florida. Unless I really wish my seat.
Well, you'd be, you would have to then arrange for a part of a place.
Which would be, which I did last year with. No, it was the same address every time. And quite frankly, the community I live in has both five residents of Augsburg. And, and with that, it, it's, that's, that's.
I don't see it being added.
That's not a gated community.
These citizens do. But they live within the gate. And one of them's a former city planner. Who was I took here in some.
Well, I would, I would say, though, if it's gated, that would still present a problem because there may be other members that come along.
You can buzz them in.
Yeah. I mean, if that's, if, so long as the public can have access.
Yeah.
As long as you're not being counted on one of the four to create a quorum, you know, we can add a section under this that says vacation.
Yeah.
You know, or we can, somebody can amend it to eliminate three months at a time.
Yeah.
Set a limit on a number of times.
To your point as well.
To discuss.
Why I wouldn't support it myself personally, but adding the extent of our many boards that have put a few retirees on it. I don't know if there's any snowbirds in them, but, you know, I mean, we're having trouble finding people for the zoning board of appeals right now. So, you know, that's only going to enhance the ability to get people to serve on their boards. So, that was just a question. I knew this was gonna come up.
Any, any other observations?
I, I think that the snowbirding issue, when you, when you take out, you're essentially taking out people who are retired because a, a great majority of people who are retired do go somewhere else for a million months, for at least a few months. So when you're taking out people who are retired, you're just reducing the amount of people able to serve, and I frankly think that people who are retired can do a better job because they have more, they have more time to put into it.
Exactly where I want it to run from there.
Need to retire. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I I work, I know you do daily work in full time, and, and it's challenging, so I, I know I'd do a better job if I were retired.
But, I mean, I'm not. On the other hand, if you're on the city council and you're gone three months out of the year, you don't really know what's going on.
But don't you?
Some kind of thing.
That's, that's not late every week.
But that, an update's fine, but we get an update from Washington all the time, too, and look, look what that gets us. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
This, uh, as written, this only applies to the city council. If we wanted to apply to the other boards, we need to retitle it and rework.
Whoever, whoever put this together, it was, it was written that way, but that's, it really should be applying to everybody. Because your law does provide it's for, um.
But that, this particular ordinance doesn't specify other city boards or even reference them anywhere in it. And I think the intent of the council is we want it to do that, but.
But while it doesn't, and I'm looking at, you know, the first area has uh, intentions under the city council about the policy to govern member and public attendance participation with city council members choose to attend public meetings, et cetera. While we might have our own policy, but following back to earlier discussions, I mean, what, what would be responsible for us has a, a generic policy to affect council and our boards, or ask each board to come up with their own policy. I mean, it doesn't make sense.
No, I just think it should be the same policy for all.
I think so.
I think we should have some department heads weigh in on that policy because it may be much easier to run a city, and I'm just using this as an example, a city council meeting than run a zoning board of appeals where someone is here giving their case. And it's, it's harder to participate. So before we opened it to every board or tried to set a policy for us, for the boards, I'd like to hear input from city staff that deals directly with those boards.
Is it possible to have the city attorney just clean this up a little bit, and then, and then put it in front of our, our boards and everybody?
Well, I'd like some input.
Yes. So I, 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 I think we need time to, after listening to discussions tonight, listen to the observations from the city attorney, that, um, we take all this under advisement, we take action to table this tonight, and then put it back on the agenda in two weeks to talk about how is a council, like, why do I tune this?
So my question with that would be, and, and I don't disagree with it, but my question with that would be, what would we do in the case of a video conference meeting from now until that point if we don't have this policy? Does the state statute take precedence, or are we working outside the scope of what we're supposed to be doing?
You passed your local law, but you don't have the guidance of your policy.
So if, I'm just using an example. So if the next meeting, I needed to, and I don't, but if I needed to attend remotely, if I noticed where I was going to be the Wednesday prior, would I then be able to attend and vote? Because if we're looking at bringing this out, then we have to have another, you know, we may have to have another, um, public hearing, and, and it may bring it out, not just one more meeting, it may bring it out multiple meetings. That's what I'm asking. Can we just fall back on that one, or?
Well, when we fall back on, on the local law that we passed to participate in meetings via video conferencing, provided there be, um, all conditions set forth in Public Officers Law, Section one oh three A.
And that's what I'm taking that to be, but I just wanted to hear from our legal counsel that if this comes up, that that's what we're gonna do. And that's what we can do.
Please, please attend to me.
I know, but you never know what things can happen, right? Like, you never know. One of us could get called away. You don't know. So we would fall back to that local law that we enacted, right?
That, that is what's going to apply, and it's, it's following as best you can one oh three A of open meetings law.
Okay.
So it's, it's gives, it gives more detail than what you have in your local law. And it, and it more or less, and your, the policy itself more or less encompasses.
I'd rather ask that question now than have Kathy panicking at three forty-five on a Wednesday.
Is that ever happened?
No.
I mean, if we, if we're just following the law, state law, do we even, the law of law, do we even need an additional policy? Obviously, this policy uh, gives us, would give us more leeway because you, you, you don't, you don't have to, uh, you don't have to say specifically where you are if you're on the road, which I've been in that situation. Every year I go on a, on a family vacation, and the day I'm coming back, there's a council meeting. And I usually just miss it. And, uh, but if I wanted to attend for some reason, uh, you know, and trying to attend remotely, I mean, uh, you know, I don't know if we necessarily need the policy, but for now, I mean, if we just follow the local law, I'm good with that, but.
I would say considering the lengthy discussion we've had and looking at the nuance of everything, it makes sense to put it into a policy because it's, it's identifying what you thought was important here.
Mm-hmm.
Saves you from trying to rethink these questions later.
And if we didn't adopt this policy or broaden the law that we enacted, where does that leave our boards and councils with regards to their, their ability to video conference? If it's silent, does it just follow the Section one oh three A?
I would say.
Yeah, but at, at the same time, the, the local law you enacted, as I look at it, it was written only for council.
Right.
So this does not apply to the other boards. So, so.
So if they're running to video conference, what do we tell them?
Probably all different, not past practice.
Go for it.
Oh, we can't just fall back on past practice that hasn't been codified. If it's part of the state statute with the, with the other, then they would follow that other law?
We've been running it illegally for years.
Year and a half.
Could be, a year and a half.
I'm just lapping through one oh three A here. And if I'm reading it correctly, the law that we passed is sufficient to allow you to video conference. And what we're debating just sets up our own individual rules and regulations, correct?
Correct, for council.
So we're still, having passed the one we passed this evening, we're fine with the policy we've used right along.
Just do another resolution for the boards and committees.
Or amend this to, yeah, just to, we had that, the other member, that other board, it applies to that. Right. We'd have to bring it back to amend the local law in a public hearing, I would guess.
Passing down the original law we just passed.
Yes.
And, and I just wanted to. I'd like to weigh in on two comments. Um, so one, Donna, um, I don't think that as someone who's retired, they would actually be more engaged. I think they would have the opportunity to be more engaged, but over the number of years that I've served on boards, and I've served on council, I have had people that have been as dedicated, that have worked multiple jobs, as I have seen people that are either no longer employed, retired, or whatever, that have been less engaged. So I think it just depends on the individual. So, um, I just would like to say that. Uh, secondly, I would like to comment on councillor Tebow's comments. Uh, it, it is difficult for the public to see a member of our council vacant for long period of times, even if they're, if they're attending via video, video conferencing. I know for me, I, I take advantage of video conferencing because I'm typically traveling for business, but I do know that I have had comments from members of the public about the amount of times that I have used video conferencing also. Um, and it's because I, it's not because I choose to. I truly try to leave a day early from a conference, or leave a day late if I'm at all possible to do that. But it, it does have an impact on everyone, uh, when we're not physically in the city. And I have said that, and I have said that about my vote with a city manager, so I would hold the same standard to myself and to anyone else, the more we can be in the city, accessible, living the same day-to-day things, um, that's really important. So I, I do stand by that.
Beauty of it is we did a nice expansion in your report, Chief.
Yes, we did.
All right, with that, let me offer the following suggestion. Maybe plural. That we table the, uh, proposed town conference policy. Ask for that policy in the local law passed tonight to be reviewed, uh, uh, say again, by management, or discussed among management, to come back to us to let us know if they believe that similar guidance might be, um, applicable or beneficial as established for our boards and commissions. And if they make such a recommendation to us, then I think we move it to those boards for a discussion. And with recommendation, exactly. Otherwise, we're comfortable with it, then we let the local law stand as is, and we possibly leave the proposed policy on the table. But as a starting point, as a starting point, then I'll make the motion to table bill number, uh, one zero five. Kathy, would you please call the rule?
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Tebow?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Tabled.
Thank you. And again, Scott, thank you very much for spending the time with us this evening. This is, uh, very tricky ground to navigate, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks.
I got some business to be read by city manager, founder, Crohn's.
An ordinance to amend Section one forty-nine dash six of the Augsburg Municipal, Municipal Code entitled Use of Marina.
Okay, second.
So I think it's just the addition of description more than it is along the eastern and northern seawall. And why does, uh, I'm surprised this is being recommended by management. I'd be curious to hear more about that.
Uh, we believe that there's a typographical error in it, identifying Kathy East versus West.
Correct.
Okay, so maybe clear, cleaning up a typographical error.
That is correct.
Okay.
So this has nothing to do with the guy getting kicked out of Marina and totally can tie his boat up outside, whatever that was earlier? Well, we would take issue with every bit of those facts as presented. Sure. Um, but we identified this as a problem, as a typographical error, and we to be requested permission to clean that up.
It's, was a word taken out of there, or just eastern subs- substituted for something, or what word was removed?
It originally stated westerly. It's now being corrected to state easterly.
I have a little bit of concern with this is because those two walls are the only places that large transient boaters have to go, because they will not fit in any of the slips. If it's a weekend or something like that, is, uh, recreation people gonna be around to get permission?
It's strictly for after October first. That's where the clarification is.
It does not say after October first.
The other section in there that you're not seeing does stay October first.
So this is.
This is just one section of that section, one letter that's being changed, changing westerly from easterly.
Okay.
When you see it in front of the marina, and you look at the marina, the way it was written was westerly. Westerly is where all of the docks were in the marina, correct, chief? And a stone wall.
That is correct.
Which you could not got involved in.
If I'm orientations, right, west is Riverside.
You have the west would be toward the Ostagachi.
North, north would be towards the circle area.
North is toward Canada.
East is towards, uh, Riverside. North is not towards Canada, that way.
North is toward Canada.
River runs north to south at this point.
For all intents and purposes, when you're looking at the marina, north is Canada. South is the Dubisky Center. West is the Ostagachi, and the eastern wall is the, uh, big pylon wall, where you used to have your squad boat for years and years.
That's, that's the way I read it also.
Correct.
But again, I'm, as long as it is only after October first, and we're assuming nobody's coming to visit the city after that time.
But you can do it with permission.
They can do it with a permit if they have a large boat, I mean, if they have permission from, uh, they can pay a, an additional fee to be there after October first, as long as they don't have a construction project going on. And it's our intent to provide a process by which to do that after October first. We just can't do that this year because of the construction.
I, I don't have an objection to this. I was just, there's many parts of this ordinance are not there that may be questioned.
Correct. That was such a little as a typo. It was just a little paragraph.
Yeah, there was nothing in this that said this is only after October first. If this was, if this was a year-long thing, I'm voting no. It's only after October.
No, sir. That was the only paragraph where there was the typo. It's correct the rest of the section.
Any other questions or comment? Kathy, please call the rule.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Tebow?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Approved.
And next item of business will be read by city manager, founder, Crohn's.
A local law establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of applications and permits and permits, uh, for battery entry energy storage systems in the city of Augsburg.
I'll make that motion.
Uh, discussion, question?
You have not had anybody apply for any of these permits at this time?
I have nothing as far as a permit is concerned.
Thank you.
Kathy, please call the rule.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Tebow?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, next item of business will be read by city manager, founder, Crohn's.
A resolution to establish a public hearing date for the preliminary twenty twenty-six budget for the city. A resolution to establish a public hearing date for the preliminary 2026 city budget for the city of Augsburg.
Move that.
Certainly.
Before, um, I offer the opportunity for discussion, I do have a statement I'd like to read with regards to the 2026 proposed budget. As I believe many of you are aware, at last Wednesday's afternoon's budget workshop number two pertaining to the proposed 2026 city budget, City Manager Fonda Cronus shared with the public information about an error in city property taxable assessments for certain parcels that was discovered day earlier by management. In brief, the total taxable value used as the basis in calculating the property tax rate of $14.50, 15 cents per thousand in the recommended 2026 city budget was overstated by approximately $30 million. When using the corrected total property assessable value, the calculated tax rate based on the recommended 2026 city budget is $15.35 per thousand. The 2025 property tax rate per thousand is $15.69. During the city manager's PowerPoint presentation explaining the problem at last Wednesday's budget workshop, he expressed management's sincere regret to city property taxpayers that such an error was made and that management was reviewing the matter in its efforts to establish appropriate checks and balances to prevent such an error in the future. After concluding his presentation of the recommended 2026 city budget at last Wednesday's workshop, the city manager asked for direction from city council as to how it wished to proceed. After discussion by council members, we directed the city manager to prepare the resolution on the table this evening for council to accept the recommended 2026 city budget proposed as the preliminary budget for 2026. We gave such direction, knowing that the development of the 2026 city budget continues in November. And in the belief that this preliminary budget remains an overall sound spending plan that maintains city services, provides for reduction in the property tax rate, and makes use of less fund balance as the city attempts to achieve a truly balanced general fund budget in the near future. Recognizing that city council might want to revise the preliminary 20, 2026 city budget due to the potential impact on the property tax rate upon discovery of the error in total property tax assessments, the city manager offered for us to consider in an effort to reduce the 2026 property tax levy. He offered options, city council will consider these options and other alternatives as we continue our deliberations that will likely lead to revisions in the preliminary 2026 city budget before council adopts a budget at its November 24 meeting. The timeline city council agreed to at last Wednesday's budget workshop. Tonight, October 27, we will accept as the preliminary 26 city budget that was recommended by the city manager on October 14th, pending further discussion. At city council's next meeting, November 10, as approved tonight by council, a public hearing will be held to allow citizens the opportunity to offer comments pertaining to the preliminary 26, 2026 city budget. And city council will resume discussions about the 2026 city budget and seek consensus on possible revisions to the preliminary 2026 city budget accepted this evening. The goal will not be to, the goal will be to achieve consensus on some, if not all, revisions offered by council members. Such supported revisions to be the basis for a resolution to revise the preliminary 2026 city budget at city council's November 24 meeting. And then on the 24th, city council passes a resolution to revise the preliminary 2026 city budget and to adopt the preliminary 2026 city budget as revised. That's what we laid out last Wednesday. Is there any desire to change any aspect of that? Would anyone like to make a further comment with regards to the resolution on the floor? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, our next item of business will be read by City Manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with SNR Electric, Inc. of Colton, New York for a lump sum that will exceed $185,180 for the main street pump station generator replacement project.
Move that. Any questions, comments? Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Approved.
And our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution to accept the city manager's recommended budget as the 2026 preliminary budget and direct that the 2026 preliminary budget be filed with the city clerk in control of the city of Augsburg.
I'll make that motion.
Kathy, please call the rule.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Approved.
That brings us to old businesses. Anyone have any old businesses this evening? Hearing none, that brings us to new businesses. Anyone have any new businesses this evening? That brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion this evening?
Your Honor, I'm like, you are going to comment on the Chamber of Commerce dinner this last? I just wanted to say that it was a wonderful event held locally and it was, uh, want to congratulate Augsburg Pepsi for their award, and they were very well represented there and made the city of Augsburg very, very proud. Um, it's a wonderful family business operated within the city limits, and, uh, they are a gem to us.
Thank you for those comments, Jim. Any other items for discussion? Uh, it then brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have two minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize it on mute one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, I wanted to call in and, uh, express my thoughts here on the presentation that was given tonight from the folks that either from Watertown or were related to the Watertown Splash Pad. That presentation, uh, I'm gonna try to be nice about it. It was garbage. Uh, the, the people had to ask Fonda for the paperwork from the podium. They didn't really inform the citizens about the amount of usage in that like they should have. Uh, I asked from the crowd and another, uh, member from the public said that the amount they stated was a lot less than what's actually being used. I've looked that up since I've been home. It can be up to 30,000 gallons a day. It, it, it does depend. But if we're gonna put that in, then maybe you guys should meter it so we can see how much water it is using. So, the taxpayers at least know if we're gonna go ahead and do something we shouldn't be doing. And for, for the fellow at the podium, uh, I mean, that, that poor guy was sweating. I'm, I kind of put him on the spot, but for him to, to, maybe he just didn't understand, but when, when, it's already been clearly stated that after a significant rainfall, it takes days for our waste treatment plant to catch up due to the volume that's coming in. So, if it rained for X amount of days, then the following day it's sunny and it's sunny out for the next 10 days, let's say, and that thing's eight hours a day cranking, running. That thing meaning the splash pad. How, he said that the water, the water that never existed on top of the rainwater that would be heading to that plant, uh, it wouldn't affect its operations, but that, that's impossible. I mean, it's common sense. It was already being, the operations were already being affected before the splash pad even existed. Now, we're just adding more water to it. And, um, it was, it was funny when Ms. Cheryl called in tonight, or Mrs. Cheryl, she, uh, said people think it's river water. That would actually be even better. It would, and I know the state wouldn't let that happen, but that would actually be a good thing. I'd support it if it was river water, being pumped through that thing and right back into the river because it is insanity when we're adding these charges to the daycare providers and the things that we're doing here. And we're adding, you guys added fees to stuff that never existed. There's a lot of stuff that, uh, stuff that has changed in this administration. And to turn around and act like you can dump that much municipal water, clean potable drinking water that's meant to go to households for kids to run, like, you know, that's why we have hoses and sprinklers at our house. That's unfucking real. Okay, thanks.
I do not see any other hands raised, ma'am.
We do not have any for executive session tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.